So, once again, I don't recognize my own home because of this background here, but whatever. So I have six o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for playback on the Town of Dayton YouTube and on Channel 9. Three of our members are joining by Zoom tonight, Paul Reynolds, Raphael, and John Jaggett. If you can all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, I kinda kept the agenda light, I know there are a lot of different things we're working on, but some of them are urgent, so might as well just work on the things that are coming up here. The first one is Discuss Review Act on the Proposed Home Business Bylaw Presentation to the Titan Planning Board. So, I did make that presentation. They didn't have too much feedback other than a couple like numbering things, like the numbering was off kinda stuff, like punctuation sort of stuff. They said they'd bring it back for public review in time to put it on the June town meeting. One of the things that we had kinda punted to them, and I think they're just gonna wait, they want us to give the recommendation, they're not gonna weigh in on it. But that is, one of the items was to allow auto repair. And knowing that that can be a little noisy, we kinda took the same guideline that is on the bylaws today for landscapers. Landscapers today, if they wanna do it out of their home, they can. I think it says they have to have 11 acres or 15 acres or something, I don't know, for landscapers.
10 acres, I believe.
Yeah. In that way, they can mitigate the noise, hide debris, heavy equipment, doesn't have to be visible necessarily. We all thought that was kind of excessive for auto repair, but we didn't really have a good suggestion of what would be appropriate. So, we just said to them, "You tell us what you think." Well, they want us to tell them what we think. So, before I resubmit it to them, I wanted to see if we could come up with like what we think is a good guideline. Obviously, you know, you do wanna have the lot be big enough that it does mitigate the noise, people aren't seeing cars and junk. And if the guidelines there, like you can't have more than two cars and you know, so this. But still, you know, if you have a quarter acre lot, you shouldn't be doing it, but you shouldn't have to have 10 acres either. So, you know, what's a good number in between those two?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah.
Two?
Okay. I think we're getting a little too far off.
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry about that.
So what do people think about two acres? And again, it would be a special permit, so therefore the planning board would have to say like, "Well, yeah, you have two acres, but it's on a long strip along the road, so you're still gonna be right next to your neighbors." Or, you know, they can look at the site and say like, "This is appropriate, this is not appropriate. Yes, you need the two acre threshold, but this is a special permit, so we have to think about noise and traffic and blah, blah, blah." So, the planning board always has the authority to go in and say like, "You meet the threshold, but the guideline is to mitigate noise, to mitigate traffic, and you know, where you're located may or may not be suitable." But, you know, two acres is, you know, what John's suggesting, so.
Are the butts notified through planning board when that happens, when they apply for it?
Special permit, the butts are notified, and that would be a special permit, so yeah.
I still say there's gotta be a lot of restrictions on it, because you give a permit for a person to have two cars that are gonna be repaired that day. And a lot of people say, "Well, I have two cars of my own." And sometimes they'll buy the third one and the fourth one, and before you know it, there's a lot of vehicles on the neighborhoods. That's the biggest problem, that you give people an inch, they wanna take five. And how do you, how do you prevent that from happening is one of the issues.
I could wait.
Switching over devices to see if that solves the feedback issue.
Okay. All right, is this okay? Yeah, I think it's, okay, yeah, thanks, Paul. So, I know, but that's everything the planning board does, they run up against that. And if the answer is always, "Well, the zoning enforcement officer is the building commissioner," you know, but...
I honestly don't have a problem with anybody having a business out of their own home, although there are already a lot of them doing that same thing without permits, without anything. And we're not doing anything about that.
It's really tough for us.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, no, there's really no way to police that in a sense. But then we, they come before us and say that they wanna do that, do it legally, and we put all the restrictions on it. Well, but my buddy's doing it, and he's not doing anything about it, so I don't know. I'm, I like the idea.
Okay. And two acres sounds like a good number?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll do that, and the next time I resubmit it to the planning board, I'll amend it to say two acres. Is everybody okay with that?
I think two acres makes plenty of sense.
All right, okay, good, thank you. The next item is Discuss Review Act on the Scheduling Update to the Board of Selectmen. So we are gonna be on their agenda for November 13th. And Paul, Laura and I had all agreed to present. So, we just wanted to divide up, or exactly layout exactly what we wanna cover, and then if we can tonight, or maybe if not tonight, the three of us can do it offline, but figure out who's gonna talk about what, just so it's all more organized. Let me just go through what I had noted down for what I think we wanted to cover, which is actually kind of a lot, but... Oh, you printed it out too, okay. But one was just kind of a general overview and introduce the members and what each one of them contributes in terms of like skill sets and background. And that's in part because, you know, John's gonna be rotating off at the end of this year. We don't have at this point another Chamber of Commerce member to step in, but at the same time, we've been talking about what kind of skills do we want on this committee that we might be lacking now? And one of the ones we've been talking about was somebody who's more accustomed to marketing, you know? Maybe particularly, you know, in the business world, getting out there, getting a notice, going to events, which events are good ones, all those kinda things. I think we just don't have members that have that background right now. So, we're gonna like make an appeal for somebody who does. John?
I was just, I was just thinking, Dan, you know, a lot of my colleagues at the chamber are folks that are represented by banks. And a lot of the banks almost like require their management to participate in community, you know, organizations. So I was wondering if you might wanna stop by, like say Mechanics or one of the other banks in town, and see if they would have someone from their marketing department maybe, you know, help us.
And they are members of the chamber, most of those banks, or almost all the banks?
Yeah, a number of them, yeah.
So, they would be able to do that without us having to ask the board? Because that was one of the things you might have to ask the board is to, because they actually set up one member of the chamber, one agricultural representative, so many at-large members, that's what I'm saying. And without a chamber member, we would have had to ask them to change our composition, to ask for them to vote on that.
Okay.
So, people think that's a good idea, maybe. Does anybody have an in with those, anybody at those banks before I just like walk in blind?
I happen to know the manager well at Bay Coast.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I can help in any way I can as well. You know, the town does some business with some of the local banks, and I'm a fan of faith, too. I'd be happy to have a conversation during the course of my normal business, because I'm in there all the time anyway, too. So, if we did kind of a two-pronged thing, I'm sure we could probably easily come up with somebody.
Between you and Joe, if you'd wanna, together or separately?
He deposits all that money in from the town, so he's got a much better in than I do.
In a way, it's your, it's your in too, it is your money.
Yeah, right. That would be great, Paul, do you mind doing that? And I don't know if, you know, we're not picking on one particular bank, just, you know, per John's suggestion, you know, that would be a good resource for us. Plus, they'd be not only marketing, if they could have somebody from the marketing department, but just as a general resource, you know, for their participation on this would be kinda helpful, you know, so.
Absolutely, there's actually an individual who has expressed interest to me in the past, who has kinda fallen off a little bit, who I know who was an employee of one of those banks, and is also a town resident, so I will see if I can get in touch with her.
Okay. Does she have a marketing background per se, or?
That, I believe she's a regional manager for them now. So, I will, I'll have to pick her brain though to see what her specific background was.
Okay.
You're talking about Mechanics, right?
No, no, I was talking about Bay Coast.
Okay.
All right, it's not a requirement that the person be a town resident, John, you know, is a former town resident, but he's not at the moment, so, but then, I mean, that's certainly fine, yeah.
And if you need, if you need anything from me, Dan, in terms of like working with Chris at the chamber, to see if, you know, maybe facilitating that, let me know.
Okay, thank you. So we, this all came up, because we were talking about what we wanna cover with the selectmen, but, so introduce the member. I would like, just for perspective sake, and Paul, you can tell me whether this is not something the town or anybody in the town really knows, but just a best guess at percentage that businesses in town contribute to the levy right now? Between property tax, personal property excise, fees, permits, you know, like some, not an exact number, but like, just what is that number as a percentage today?
That is a good question. So what I can do is tomorrow, I can link up with the assessor and see, because the accounting in the payment processing software that we use obviously distinguishes between real estate and personal property, but it doesn't distinguish between residential and commercial. So however, the assessors, I know they use another system, which does distinguish between the residential and commercial in their reporting. So we should have the ability to generate a report of who is contributing what. So I think I should be able to get that information from the assessing office.
What about like fees, excise, permits? And those are probably not the bulk of what, you know, businesses pay to the town, but it's a part of it, is that able to be pulled into?
That, I can check, that one might be a little trickier. For the reason being that the excise, the excise bills aren't, you know, homebrewed, so to speak, that we receive those in electronic file from the Registry of Motor Vehicles, which we then kinda pump out into a format that matches our tax bills.
Okay.
So I will, you know, what I can do is, I'm just gonna make a note right now, is I will call our software provider in the morning to see if there's anything, because really the only thing I could think of offhand, and this might give us a small drop in the bucket anyway, is just thinking creatively, kinda outside of the box right now. The tax software that we utilize has a couple of wildcard characters. And what I'm thinking is that normally, we would search by a person's name or their garage address in order to see their bill. But I'm wondering if maybe I could pull a search for anything that comes up as like a wildcard character, which will, wildcard character will match anything, basically. So if you do wildcard space, it will show you basically everything. I'm wondering if I could do like a wildcard space LLC or a wildcard space Inc., and then get the information for any vehicle that's registered in the town that ends in LLC or incorporated or contains one of those? I kinda feel like for excise, that's gonna be the closest that I can really get though, for like what's, what's, you know, registered individual versus a commercial vehicle?
Okay, no, I mean, it's something, and you know, again, I just wanted to like, put it, does all this in perspective when you talk to them, or just put information out there about how much business we have? And, you know, maybe compare it to other towns, how low it is or how high it is, but, you know, it's just, I think it helps. So, the...
I just add something to that, because if Paul's only looking for commercial businesses, he's gonna wipe me out and any other farm, because we're not really commercial. We're agriculture, and the other thing, my, so I, my excise taxes are under my, the mine or my husband's name.
It doesn't say DDA or anything?
No, and I have like 10 trucks, so.
It's the best we can do, I mean, I don't think excise is the bulk of what the town gets in money from businesses. It's a piece of it, so I would just say we do the best we can, yeah. 10 trucks is a lot, though. Oh, hi, Tim, yeah.
Yeah. Quick question, I think the Economic Development Plan that was done by SERPEd also had a lot of good statistics in there about where Dayton was compared to other towns, I believe, right? In the region, you might be able to get some good statistics out of that.
I did, I don't know their methodology. Okay. And the numbers look a little high to me, honestly, so I'm not sure. I could ask them what their methodology was, and they may just have like some state program that they're taking the information off of, so they may not even know, but, but I can inquire from them too, yeah.
Okay.
So in terms of splitting up what we wanted to talk about between the three of us, so one is, like I said, I just do a general interview with the members, the activities we've done over the past couple of years, including like we started with talking with town residents via the survey, and then the Economic Development Plan to see what they wanna do. We've tried to establish relationships with town businesses to shop local, like the business at events through the chamber. The, what we wanna do about business owner networking events locally, like whether it be twice a year or once a year, whatever we decide to do, it's a future. The media spotlights that Paul's been doing, the online business directory that's out there. We wanna do welcome cards, we wanna revitalize our Facebook page, we wanna add an events calendar out there to the Facebook page where people can post events. So this is just kinda like, you know, step one, which is what we've been working on, which is just open up relationships with the town and with people and the local businesses. Step two, which is establish Dayton as more business friendly. So this is where, you know, we took the proposal to the assessors for a personal property tax exemption, which is now gonna be on the special town meeting, talking to the planning board about expanding home-based business bylaws, make it more friendly, update to the Dayton Business Guide. We can talk about things that other departments have done, like the establishment of the PAC Committee that is now out there for a couple of years, but also the planning board and also CONCOM are both taking steps to streamline the whole process around engineering views, which used to be very time-consuming between the ask, the approval, the request, the review, and, and you, the CONCOM does have a proposed bylaw change, correct, Paul? To try to kinda streamline that a bit?
Yes, one of the components of that is, it's still a work in progress, but one of the components that we ran into was we have delegated to the conservation agent the ability to accept peer review proposals and communicate them to the applicant on our behalf. The reason for that is that, let's say that you have a meeting on a Thursday, and at that meeting, we decide that we wanted to send something to peer review. Sometimes within just a day or two days, we can get a scope and proposal back from the peer review engineer. And the applicant does wanna move forward, they wanna, they wanna continue, they wanna cut us a check, they wanna get the work underway. But the way that it was previously, they would have to wait an entire month for us to convene again just to accept that proposal, and then formally state that we were going to refer it to the applicant, and then wait for them to give us a check, and then open the account, and then, you know, perform the work. Where now, one of the things that we've done is we're delegating to the agent the ability to accept those proposals on our behalf. So that now, if you, we have a meeting, we decide that we wanna send something to peer review, if we get the peer review scope and proposal back the following Monday, and the applicant's amenable and wants to move forward, then there's no longer anything holding them back, which can, which is good, because that can speed up somebody's application by, you know, up to a month. And we're talking about, you know, somebody who's, you know, at risk of maybe missing a planting season or missing a, you know, chunk of a building season. Hopefully, it's gonna make things more efficient, but yeah, that is, that is one of the changes that we're moving forward with.
And the planning board recently did the exact same thing, so, for the same reasons. So, you know, we can just, I know we're there to talk about an overview of the DDIC, but we can at the same time say, you know, "And we're not the only ones, you know, pushing this effort forward, you know, these are examples of what other boards are doing," and that sort of thing. The whole use of online permitting at all, which the town has had the software for five-plus years, and the only person using it was Jim Aguirre, and he kept saying to everybody, every other department, "You gotta get on board, you gotta get on board." It's only recently that they started to do it, but, you know.
Really, I was, I was one of the first departments to get built in and get integration with PermitLink. Jim had been the advocate for it, that we now do that. We've completely replaced the paper, the paper sign-off form for tax status applications, whenever somebody wants to pull a building permit. Getting a sign-off that their taxes are current is one of the first components of that. Now, we've, for the most part, completely done away with the paper form for that now, because he can just task us in PermitLink, and we can just log in, approve it, or decline it from right there, and then we can even send out an email if we do have to decline something. We can even push out an email directly to the applicant with a timestamp directly through the software that says, you know, "Please contact the collector's office because you have a delinquent such and such."
Yeah, so I mean, we can note that, you know, what other groups are doing too, just as part of this. But that's a good example, too. And then the third leg, which is more of our future, which is like kinda marketing. So, we can talk about the tri-fold, we can talk about digital marketing, which we have some stock drone footage now that we have, we had done last year, but we haven't really utilized it, but what's the best way to do that? And, and also kinda selective outreach to specific companies to engage them, kinda what John did with Gotham Green. So, you know, those are kinda like the three areas you wanna cover. So I don't know if Paul and Laura, you wanna think about like what pieces you'd like to talk about, if any? Or maybe we can just do this sort of the email conversation between the three of us and divide this up so that, you know, one person's on luck, and for 10 minutes, the other's talking for 30 seconds, and we can just kinda figure out how to split it all up?
That works for me.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'll put all this in an email between the three of us, and we can just divide it up. And then November 13th is that meeting. And then the thing we have to remember that we wanna ask to the board, and maybe we can figure out before then if we're gonna get a chamber representative or not, like through the bank, but if not, we don't wanna ask for a name change? I'd have liked my name. And I think everybody wants Dayton Economic Development Committee, that, correct? Is that what we agreed on?
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, okay. All right, so good, so I'll send that email out, so we can figure out who's gonna cover the material. Is there anything that I kinda missed from that overview about what we wanna bring the selectmen up the board on? I'm not sure if I mentioned the thank you notes that we're gonna start doing, we can, but they're still in a draft form, but we can just like mention it to them that we're gonna start doing that, and I can, I have the numbers for how many new businesses have started in the past year, and it's kinda surprisingly, it's like 20, all home-based, but, you know, still, you wouldn't think there was 20 new businesses in town, but, you know.
Now, Dan, this might be a little too nascent to mention to the selectmen just yet, but what are your thoughts on doing a teaser for them of the potential, you know, agricultural lease that we've been discussing?
Oh, actually, I did mean to include that, and I just forgot to mention it, I hadn't written it down in my list yet. But yeah, I think we definitely wanted to do that, we may not have much by then, but just to talk about like what you were able to identify, and that we're gonna look at the sites, and, yeah, definitely.
Cool, awesome.
Anything else on that that anyone wants to bring up? No, okay. The last thing, which we can spend more time on, is I sent out, Paul, put together a list of 30 town sites that, at least on paper, have the potential to be leased for agricultural use. And I think there's, I don't know, is it one of these 30 that is currently being leased to Arushos? Or that's yet, that's not something that's even on the list? Because I know Arushos leases one parcel right now from the town, correct?
Yes, that's correct, I believe that I left that off of this list. And I'm just gonna, the little diagram that you were kind enough to provide. I happen to live very close to that parcel that he leases, so I'll be able to tell you very quickly if that's on the list. And there is Milk Street, there's Council, nope, it is not.
Okay, all right, so the other are 30 parcels that on paper, both look like good candidates. I did email it out to everybody, and I printed it to everyone here. I also sent Paul and John and Raphael a copy of a map. I just marked out on the map like items 1 through 30, corresponding to how they appear on the Excel, so you can see visually where these things are located in town. And Paul, I don't know if you wanna just give us an idea of like how to read your Excel and what your criteria was or whatever, so.
Absolutely, so I've got my copy right in front of me. So what we did was, we identified by, they're sorted by parcel ID, so that, that string of numbers refers to the assessor's map and lot. So those are, if you were to use like the GIS map, then that would be the parcel ID that you'd be able to type in, that you could zoom right in on it. So those are just the identifiers for mapping lots, so that we could locate the parcels. The addresses, anything that doesn't have a house on it is number zero. So these are just all vacant land, so they're all zero, such and such street. We sorted them by lot size and acres, and then for frontage, yes or no? So what I did on this, you'll see, you know, because really is, I was just concerned with if any of these were candidates for agriculture, is it possible to get, you know, access them from the street? So this is just showing whether or not this street access, and then you'll see that, for the most part, I didn't bother listing anything that had absolutely no access whatsoever. With the ends, you'll see that the ends all have asterisks next to them. And the reason for that is that all of these parcels are either accessible from the street, or they're not, but they are but another town-owned parcel that is.
Okay.
So in the notes section, frontage, yes, no? The noes all have asterisks, but then say, like just as an example, the first one on the spreadsheet that I see is Zero Wheeler, you know, map I'll, one, Lot 11, where it's N, but then if you go over where it says extensive wetlands, access to road through Lot 12 Wheeler, which is the one above it, which where you see frontage, yes. And I didn't get as green, you're like, is clicking on each one and saying how many feet of frontage, but the mapping software actually does get that specific, so as we narrow it down, I actually can get you that information. And so that is designed to show us whether or not there's road access, and if there isn't, then where it's from. The lot size is just the lot size in acres. That can be a little bit misleading for the reason being that several of those are adjacent, and so they might... And so they might actually be considerably more. Like as an example, you'll see a big block of Tremont Street. Parcel is toward the top of the list. And there's a 1.68 acre lot. However, just directly beneath it, there's a 2.75 acre lot and those are both, those are both adjacent. So that's really more like, you know, almost four, four and a quarter, four and thirds right there.
Yeah.
And then, oh, I'm sorry. It's actually also, oh no, I did that in the notes. Yeah, there we go. So it's actually also the, the lot above that, that 2.9 acre is also adjacent. So over in the additional notes says 7.33 acres total adjacent lots. And now as a member of the conservation commission, I do have to tell you that the GIS maps are not accurate. So pretty please do not build a shed based on the GIS maps. But that said, they are at least a handy, you know, kind of general barometer to assess, you know, what may or may not be even worth looking at. Usually the GIS map's very old outdated. You know, I, I live on a very, very wet parcel. I occasionally have the muddy cove brook in my basement. And on the GIS maps, it looks like, it looks like I am a hundred feet out of the wetland. So don't go by those, but they're just a general good stepping off point. So on there, I, I listed whether or not there's wetlands present. And then for some reason I, I forwarded this spreadsheet to my other device. And for some reason I lost the, the green highlights. So I don't see the, the highlighted green ones on my own copy right here, but I will for my office computer. The ones that I highlighted were the ones that I felt were the best candidates judged on the criteria that they had reliable frontage or access to frontage. And they had the least wetlands. Moreover, their access points, if they did need to be accessed through another parcel, that their access parcel had lesser limited wetlands. So that was really kind of what I was trying to judge by was road access and, and wetlands. I warranties about the suitability for farming, but uh, just those at least appear that you can get to them. This is very, my very first box to check, so to speak.
Good. Thank you. I know this was a lot of work, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mapping them all on the, on the map is, I'm sure was a lot of work as well. And it was, it was very handy because as I was looking at this list, I was really doing a lot of back and forth to like remind myself which parcels were where. So thank you very much for putting those together with the pinpoints. That's very helpful.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know actually, anything about the current lease that the town does with the one lot. What its history is, how it got started and so forth. But that's kind of an aside. I mean, it's a good template for the town if they do this elsewhere. But in terms of I guess the next question is which of these, if any, are actually suitable to be brought forward? And then, you know, if the town wants to do it, how they would go about advertising it? What they make available, those are all things down the road. But you know, Barbara and, and Laura, I guess we'd be looking to you to figure out how, how do we proceed to determine, or maybe you just know by knowing the town, what's good, what's bad, you know, in terms of if any of these are well, are worth, worth looking at.
I, I responded to you way back when, when you presented. Yeah, like you've, yeah, we almost have to look at it. Cause what is it? Is it?
And you said you'd want to look at it in winter, right? When the, when the cover's gone. So you, it's a better.
Yeah.
And Paul already volunteered to drive everybody around.
Oh, cool.
You did make that call for it, right, Paul?
Oh, yeah. There we go.
Yeah. And then you, we'd want to do soil tests to see is it going to be? Like what, no farmer is
What the composition is, how many rocks are there?
Well, I'm sure there's lots of rocks because I, I am the best rock farmer.
They grow every year, don't they? You know, John Evangelos on Middle Street has really nice rocks out there. God bless you. I'm not sure I could check on them, but they'd like to lease it out in the back. You have to go through that driveway. But there's a good good 25 and it has water.
That's a private owner you're talking about?
Totten.
You're talking about a private owner, not a town owner. Okay.
Yeah. So that's all the other things. And like you, you attended the meeting that CMAP did with Land for Good. And if the town is going to rent or lease these, you'd have to put like, what are the benefits? Like, is there water available and all that stuff. But first I guess look at it and then do soil analysis.
What is the cost for, like, let's say you look at it, however you judge it, it looks promising. What's the cost to the town to proceed with like, okay, let's figure out if it's really worth it and do soil analysis and et cetera.
I don't think
Soil analysis is not that bad.
Yeah, I don't think you'd have to, I think if you had NRCS, NRCS National Resources Conservation Service was part of USDA. They have a lot of stuff already.
Okay.
So we could check with them on these lots.
John?
Yeah, I, I do a soil analysis every other year or so. I send it to UMass. And it costs like $20 or something, right? To do a, a soil analysis, you know, certainly for a residential. So I don't know what they would charge the town or whatever, but would that be an option?
So, go ahead, Paul. So, go ahead, Paul. Yeah.
Well, I, I like that idea. We'll definitely have to do some due diligence and 20, $20 due diligence is one of my favorite kinds.
Now, are all these parcels owned by the town right now?
That's how Paul identified. And these are town lots that could the town, or if they're suitable for leasing, could the town lease them out to somebody who wants to farm them? You, you're bringing up a different point, which is still good, which is there's private owners out there.
Backland, that's the only thing I'm thinking with them. It's backland is really no way to get into it to develop it at this point. And they may, they may go for it.
So that would probably
Nice land, really nice.
But that, in that instance, the private owner, would that be more the kind of thing which we would point towards CMAP to say, you know, like if they're interested, get in touch with CMAP because CMAP is in the business of helping people identify stuff like that. You know, our avenue is a little bit different because we're kind of representing the town. And maybe we would then, the town might work through CMAP if that, you know, any of these are doable. But in that case, that probably would be the best avenue. Yeah.
There's a problem with deer there, but that's about it. Everywhere, but it's really so quiet back there. But the quality of the land is very, very good, very good.
So what's the next step with this?
Laura and I can go driving around.
We've got a chauffeur.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
Paul, you're going to regret having said that.
You're going to rent a limousine?
We need a four wheel.
I'm going to take a hay wagon.
Yeah, hay wagon. Yeah, there you go.
Be in a cramped little Chevy hatchback EV. Sorry in advance.
Oh God. Okay. I'll take the Tahoe.
I've got a Toyota minivan. It's all yours too, if you want.
We'll be calling Tommy Ferry to come pull us out.
So do you want to, we haven't talked about next meetings because we're hitting the holidays, but is this the kind of thing that the two of you would want to look at and then maybe come January, February, you start talking about you, how many of these you've had a chance to look at?
Right.
Do any of them look? Yeah, we should do a soil test here.
Laura said she's going to be bored next month, so.
Well, I have one other fun contribution to this as well. Is that at two meetings ago, the, I forget if it was through the Department of Agriculture or who is from, it was either the state or federal agency. But the conservation commission just accepted a new federal program called the Farmland of Local Significance Program. Which what that does, it allows the conservation commission to designate certain parcels of farmland as farmland of local significance. The good thing about this is that it doesn't, there's no deed restrictions. It doesn't, you know, invite government into, you know, mess with anybody's practices or anything. It doesn't impose limitations on anything. But what it does is it allows localities to designate certain farmland as being locally significant because the Fed recognizes that that sometimes parcels are significant to a local economy, but the specific soil type or whatever they produce doesn't fall in one of the federally protected buckets. So what this does basically, in a way, allows local towns to kind of like deputize their farmland, so to speak, as being of a category that is eligible for federal grants. So if there does end up being improvements or clearing or, you know, some kind of remediation or something that would need to be done to this land that is a potentially good candidate to get it up to muster for an agricultural lease, that could be brought to the conservation commission to declare that as farmland of local significance. And if they did, it would open it up for, for potential grants under, I believe it's the Department of Agriculture.
Oh, that'd be great. Actually, CMAP had a seminar last week that I was on and Laura obviously was there. Somebody texted me about that and they said, here's a list of all the, I said, I'd asked in the seminar, what can towns do to help promote agriculture? And somebody said, you should do exactly that, what you just said, Paul. And they sent me this list. But I saw Dyson's name on it because, and with an acceptance date of like September or something. So that's what it was. It was kind of just accepting it and it was already updated on their list.
Oh, that's cool. If they updated it that fast. Yeah, no, we just did it. I think two meetings ago. Yeah, exactly. He said, yeah, we just did it recently.
Yeah. Okay. Good.
I could talk with Lisa, because I'm, talk to Lisa every day on different things. Conservation, ask her to look it up, work with her also.
That'd be great. Yeah.
And then we've done a couple of things between conservation and Board of Health with land and farmers and cows. And I'm learning a lot of things.
And the other thing is, and I know we were talking like soil samples kind of stuff. And this is something that got either you said or it got brought up on that CMAP meeting, which is not all land is good for everything. But it may be horrible to grow vegetables on, but it might be great for animals. So you know, you just have to keep that in mind. It's like, you can't just like write it off. It's like, you know, maybe this is good agricultural land, but for a very specific niche, you know, so.
Or hay.
Or hay. Yes, exactly.
You know, there, there are different fields that work best.
Paul, has any of these land pieces here been on the auction?
There was one. Yes, there was one that we decided against at the last minute. Let me see if I can off the top of my head, remember which one it was. I want to say it was, let's see, I'm just going to pull up my spreadsheet. So I think it was 13 point something acres. Let's see. There was, oh, Purchase Street. There it was. Map 14, map 14 dash seven dash two. I'm almost positive it was this one. Zero Purchase Street. It was the 15 acre parcel. And the reason that we pulled it was because at the last minute I'd been in talks with the building commissioner. And we were a little bit leery that based on the frontage, it had kind of weird funky small access on Purchase Street, right along the Rehoboth line. And we were a little bit leery that it would be a little too close to checking all the boxes for conservation subdivision. So before we auctioned that, we just, we really wanted to understand a little more about the parcel. And know what the full use and implication of it was. And we wanted to play with the idea of if it could be a, whether or not that was going to be something that we wanted to sell or we wanted to retain. And I think at the time the town just had a little bit of concern about opening a Pandora's box if they were to sell it to, to somebody that, you know, wanted to put a lot of houses back there. So we decided at the last minute to pull that one, but that was the only one that was under consideration during our last auction, which is 2023.
You know anything about the piece that's leased to the Arushos? Do you know what?
I know very little. I do know that that's been something that the commission is meant to renew. Is because the lease, I believe, actually expired and it's just going on like a month to month basis right now. With, we've had some turnover in the conservation office. We just lost our administrative assistant. But I've been meaning to request a copy of that lease. That's something else that I'll ask Lisa about this week. I'll see if I can get a copy of the lease. That way I can send it to the commission. It's something that we could review at a, at a future meeting.
Is there a reason it's month to month?
Just because it expired. It normally would be like a year, two year, however long lease. I just know it just happened to have expired and it was one of those things that the commission kind of put on the back burner to, to renew it. I think it's just kind of just, just going on a month to month basis right now. But as far as I know, I haven't heard any, you know, wishes from the Arushos to terminate that lease. So I don't have any reason to believe that they won't want to renew it. But I think it's just, just a matter of we just have to, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's on it again.
Why is it that conservation is the person or group in charge of their land?
Oh, so that is conservation land. Yeah. Yeah. Is, is conservation commissions are one of the municipal agencies that's actually capable of owning the land. So normally town owned land is titled in the name of Town of Dyton, but for the conservation commission, certain, certain things that are held with conservation restrictions can actually be deeded into the name of the conservation commission. Which is sometimes, sometimes something folks do with like, you know, with estates and things like that. Sometimes they'll choose to leave it to the commission. So the commission doesn't own a ton of lands, not nearly as much as the town, but we've got a few, a handful of parcels here and there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this? Otherwise we can like bring it up back in early next year, like January, February. Check some of these out.
We may have to get us snowshoes though. Get it done.
My mud boots.
I got my fly going, so.
You're all set.
Thank you. I appreciate that. There you go.
Likes snow.
Take my kids' badminton rackets to my feet and walk around in those.
No announcements, no correspondence. Any public input?
Did you, so Dan and I did the webinar. Which was called unlocking your land's potential, partnering with farmers and leasing farmland. And I, it, I, what did, what did you think? I mean, it was primarily, it's just I, what I got from it is CMAP and Land for Good are there to help you as a town or a landowner in leasing your farmland.
Yeah, they'll help put interested farmers in touch with interested landowners. And, you know, work out arrangements, not work out, not CMAP work out the arrangements, but put the two parties together. And there were a couple of people on the call who were just landowners. They just leased. There are a couple of people on the card who were farmers who leased and a couple of people who were just interested in becoming farmers. But they didn't have any property, I don't think at the moment. So it was interesting, you know, to hear each person's perspective. One woman said, I lease, I don't even charge anything. I just want the land to be used for something good. I, I just want a tenant, period. And I'm not even going to ask you for money.
I have my, it's my cousin really. He's got 15 acres and he just, he likes having the 61A tax break and
That's it. They need that.
Yeah. So he doesn't pay much in real estate taxes and he lets us use it.
Yeah. And the other thing, and that's why I asked about the month to month is it's an investment to do farming, like a long-term investment. You know, a month to month or even a year to year.
Oh, yes.
Not a very long lease in the farmer's eyes. They want They want, they want a long lease.
It takes years to build it up.
Yeah.
Most farmers will not go, if they have to do land clearing and things like that, it makes no sense at all for them to take it for a year or even five years.
No.
Right.
And a, a couple of weeks ago, a farmer I know is leasing land in Rehoboth. He built a greenhouse and he had to, he's not gonna lease the land anymore, I don't know why, and he had to move the greenhouse to land he's leasing in Lakeville. And that was a pain.
Yeah, yeah. It's a pain.
Why does, why does the town want to keep this land?
Well, Paul, Paul's on the land use committee, I think. Paul, maybe you can speak to that, just as a land use member.
Oh, sure, on uh, on why the town would want to keep a particular piece of land?
Yes.
Um, well, there's a, a few, a few reasons and a few non-reasons. So one is that sometimes the town doesn't want to keep the land and it's just a matter of other people aren't willing to buy it. Um, but the other, the, the big reason, I would say is the most common reason, nine out of ten times, is uh, towns are concerned with housing development, right? I, I think that that's, that's probably the, the big one, is that um, you know, the towns are reluctant to sell a large piece of land only to find that, you know, a couple of years later now, there's, there's a subdivision there that's got, you know, ten or fifteen or twenty houses. Um, I think a lot of towns are looking to, to, you know, development, frankly, to a certain degree. Um, you know, especially in Dayton where, well, one of our biggest fiscal limitations is skyrocketing educational assessments. Um, you know, the cost to educate child, the Town of Dayton is very high. And um, with residential development, when you're putting kids in schools, the property taxes that you take in from, from residential property are dramatically eclipsed by the, the corresponding educational assessment that you're gonna incur with that. So um, my guess is that slow, slowing down housing development is probably one of the reasons that towns want to retain these parcels. Um, there's also other reasons, right, like future municipal use, right? Is these, is um, towns know that eventually they might need a new, you know, like, just look in the case of Dayton, right? We're discussing a new elementary school right now, we're discussing a new fire station. Um, so I do think that, that municipal use is one of the reasons. I can tell you that um, tax foreclosures are about to change dramatically in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, because as of November first, um, tax possession law and procedure is gonna change dramatically. Where now, once a town comes to possess a property, so the law of the land in Massachusetts, still today, technically, I guess, for another couple of days, is that if a town was to auction off a tax foreclosure possession, they are entitled to the full proceeds of that sale. The, the former owner gets nothing. Uh, they are not entitled to any excess equity above and beyond what they owed at the time that they were foreclosed. As of November first, that's no longer the case. Um, truly, it's no longer the case now because the Supreme Court struck it down, but Mass codified it in a law that takes effect November first. And so um, in Massachusetts now, once we come to foreclose on a tax possession property, we need to decide within, I believe it's literally fourteen days from when you finally get the decree, uh, the decree of foreclosure judgment. You have, I believe it's literally fourteen days to decide whether or not you're gonna sell that parcel or you're gonna keep it for municipal use. If you decide to sell it, then you're only allowed to keep what was outstanding at the time of foreclosure, plus any related expenses, you know, uh, court costs, auctioneer, stuff like that. And um, or if you're gonna retain it for municipal use, now you're required to get it appraised and then pay the former owner what the property is worth above and beyond what they owe. So now it's really, it's like, even if you take all the time and expense to foreclose it, in a way, it's really like you're buying it from the former owner. Um, so I can tell you that all of that's about to change pretty dramatically. But you know, why a town would want to retain a parcel is, you know, honestly, my guess, nine out of ten times when a town chooses not to sell a parcel, it's um, it's either for planned or potential future municipal use, or it's to um, to restrain development.
Is, is that only for municipalities or is it a law that's gonna go through for banks and, and all?
This law specifically deals with municipalities. This was a, it was called the Tyler Decision, which was a sup- uh, New York Supreme Court case decision that was um, eventually upheld in Massachusetts as well. And so now um, now tax possessions have been deemed um, that they can no longer keep the excess equity, you know, equity theft is what, is what it's called, the popular terms equity theft. So equity theft has been banned by the Massachusetts Supreme Court. And whether the legislature passed the law and the governor signed it or not, that was gonna become the law of the land or it became the law of the land the minute the Supreme Court made that decision. However, Massachusetts is now um, codified that and then also kind of beefed it up. And the beefed up provisions include, you know, rapidly making a decision about whether or not you're gonna keep it. Um, you know, performing the appraisal, buying out the former owner. Those are all new things that go into effect eleven-one, but those are all specifically geared towards municipalities and how they handle tax possession foreclosures.
Oh, and I think it's Dartmouth. They are doing something where they are selling land to farmers, but there is like a restriction where the farmer can never, can always has to have it farmland.
Right, they buy it with an agriculture restriction built in as part of.
It's not the state one that we were talking online about.
What they do with reeds and divines.
They're just selling their, the right to build on.
Mm-hmm. But that, the reeds and divines, that's, that was for the state where they received money.
Mm-hmm, yes.
For that, yeah. But what I think I heard happened in Dartmouth, like the farmer can buy the land, but never, can never build.
So they're buying it at a reduced price?
Yes.
And the ra- the reduced price is because the value has been reduced because of that restriction.
Mm-hmm.
But they're nonetheless, they're just buying it with that restriction built in, so. Okay, but you're saying, in this case, maybe some of this town land could be sold?
Yes.
With an agriculture restriction built in, so why is the town hanging on to it? And, and uh, those would all probably be questions eventually back to the land use committee, which is, which Paul's a member of anyway, but yeah. And when they do sell, they auction it off, so, which are here, there's some restrictions, Paul, whether, since the, the town's required to auction off to get the highest price, could it auction off something with an agriculture restriction built in, which decreases its value?
Yes, one hundred percent. Um, so I actually had a direct conversation about this specifically with Dave Capola of Capola and Capola out of Marblehead, who's just who I use for all of our um, tax possession cases. Uh, when I go to the Mass Collector Treasure Association Annual School and take the Tax Title and Foreclosure uh, courses, he literally teaches the class, so he's just, there's somebody I feel very confident and comfortable with going through. And I have had this specific conversation and yes, if we do want to auction something with a deed restriction baked in, that is something that we have the right to do. And uh, from my conversations with him, they are um, they are fairly binding. Now, obviously, they, you know, the purchaser would have the right to challenge it later, of course, you can't change that, but um.
At, at CMAP's holding another um, educational event this week at Bristol Aggie, uh, writing and negotiating successful farmland leases. And I am gonna to attend it.
When is that, Laura? I know I saw it, but I, I forgot to jot it down.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Who says that's next week, Laura?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is that next Wednesday or this Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
What time, hon?
Five thirty to seven.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Actually, would it be possible to send that out as an email to the commission? Cause I'd like, I'd like to attend too, if it's possible.
Sure.
Thank you.
I would like to note that um, with my Vernon, Vermin problem in North Dayton, I've been cruising the streets a lot up there. And um, people were pointing the finger at Boston Sash as to be the problem and it's not at all. Um, but I did have a chance to go through the company looking for the owner one day to uh, see where he put the, the rat traps. And um, I was so impressed by it. They've upgraded so much.
Yeah, I think inside there too.
Oh, it's amazing. Have you been in the new part where the um, the offices are in the front?
Yeah.
That amazed me how they've done such a great job there.
And just if you go in and you see them working on something?
Mm-hmm.
These enormous, like, ten, twelve-foot-high window arches that are gonna go someplace into the building. And you know, they're just gorgeous and they're all being constructed in there, so.
They've done a good job and I just noticed that to the south, they've just cleaned out that parking lot. I don't know what they're doing with that. And to the west, that parcel of land is for sale now. So things are changing up in that area. But I was really, really impressed what he's done with Boston Sash. It's a really positive move for Dayton.
Any other public input?
Kind of talked about um,
Mendoza.
Mendoza, but I mean, I don't know what we can possibly do, cause.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Is it APR? I don't, I did not see that on the.
It does say, yeah, actually, I mean, Laura and I just been exchanging emails and I just, in this conversation about farming and I had mentioned that Mendoza Farm has been listed out there now for, I think, over a year. They haven't budged on the price. The price has not been knocked down at all, so they're still asking, you know, what some people thought was a, you know, I'm not sure if the number is good or bad, but uh, it's thirteen acres. In the listing at least, it does say, and it's, and I think, what did I write down? I, it says specifically, zone used allowed for single-family home and agriculture. So it's zoned that way. Now, I can only.
That doesn't mean APR.
It may not, yeah, I assume that meant there was an APR on it, maybe not, but.
It's probably sixty-one A.
Which can come out of sixty-one A.
Yeah.
But I don't know, but I just assumed that it's an APR, maybe not then. But we were just talking about why is, and you said you had investigated it for your own potential personally, yes, and it just wasn't, you know.
I don't have that kind of money and there's, there's so much that needs to be done to it, like the greenhouses are not good. The house needs a lot of work and.
Is that the property on Elm Street?
And I don't, I would, I mean, it's, I think it's on the river.
Mm-hmm, wetlands.
So that's, it's wet.
Yes, it is.
I know, I have deer, so I know they're gonna have deer.
Actually, a deer just got hit on one thirty-eight crossing through there a week ago.
Let's not have that conversation again.
Drop it off.
Hmm?
Drop it off to me, I'll take it.
Oh, it's, yeah, I, I, it wasn't a pretty sight. I, I just happened to be getting gas and it was right.
So the next item I have is uh, approval of meeting minutes. I don't have September's put together and we did not have a form the last time to prove the August meeting minutes. If everybody's had a chance to read them, I will accept a motion to approve the August twenty-sixth meeting minutes.
Someone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next meeting date, um, so we're starting to hit the holidays, so the, if we stick with the fourth Monday of the month for November, that would bring it up to November twenty-fifth, which is right before Thanksgiving. The fourth meeting Monday of December is December twenty-third, right before Christmas. Um, just because we do have a lot of things going on, I would like to meet at least once more before the end of the year. I don't know if people are comfortable meeting that Monday before Thanksgiving or is that's a bad time for people? Monday, all right, and then we can skip December. All right, so we'll, we'll stick with um, Monday, November twenty-fifth as our, our next meeting date. Um, and do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Can you adjourn? Thank you, good night, Abel.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye.